Are we back there, Jen?
I think so. I just don't hear anything.
Am I hearing anything?
Oh, you're not picking up any?
Yeah, when I hit record, you know how we always hear that recording in progress?
Yeah.
That's true. Here we go.
Do we need to move these mics closer, or is that a problem?
I don't think that's the problem, no. We don't have anyone online to test if they can hear.
Well, Brian's online.
I'm online. Well...
Yeah, remote.
But not on YouTube.
You could turn on your mic and it would do the same thing, wouldn't it?
Yeah, maybe. I think we'll just get reverb.
Well, at least you'd have that.
Sure. Let me try that. Oh, yeah, we're good.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we'd like to call to order Water Resource Board meeting number 7-25, the work session of the meeting. It's originating here at the Best Western University Inn in Moscow, Idaho. Glad to be here with everyone today. The first item of business is roll call. If we could please, Jennifer.
Right. Mr. Barker?
Yeah, here.
Ms. Colhanson?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Here.
Mr. Richmond? Mr. Olstead?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Ransstone?
Here.
And Chairman Rebl?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Patton, the first item on the agenda is Idaho Water Transactions Program.
Yes, John LaFredo from our staff will make this presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, John. Sorry about the confusion earlier today.
Oh, no problem.
How often do you get to drive the pulley in the back?
Exactly. Over years ago, every day. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for your time this morning. Today, I will be presenting on some emerging issues with the Lemhi River L6 diversion infrastructure and a new permanent water transaction for consideration to help maintain the board's minimum stream flow on the lower Lemhi River, which is attributed to the salmon river. But first, I wanted to talk about the significance of this cover slide. So every year, the irrigation season on Lemhi begins on March 15th, and where there's a threat of a Mother's Day low, where irrigation demand can exceed available supply weeks before peak snowmelt. And without the modern diversion structure pictured here, the state held minimum stream flow water right, willing senior water users to spill water in stream, and available grant funding to keep the water users whole, there's no doubt in my mind that there would have been a de-watering event in April of 2022 at the L6 diversion. And such an event would have the biological effect of halting juvenile salmon outmigration and adult escapement. It would also have the acute sociological impact by through enforcement actions brought against local irrigators by the National Marine Fisheries Service providing the fodder for a third-party lawsuit. And in all, this picture represents the culmination of three decades of collaborative effort between the upper sand basin watershed program and our local producers to recover critical habitat for ESA-listed fish while respecting the value use and the private property rights of those producers. And as a reminder, the catalyst for the minimum stream flow on the lower Lemhi at L6 was the threat of federal enforcement through the ESA following a Mother's Day low de-watering event in May of 2001, which then led local irrigators to request the minimum stream flow from the Siqueg L6. Subsequent negotiations between the National Marine Fisheries Service and the state led to a 35-25 CFS minimum stream flow from March 15th to November 15th. And while the irrigation season on Lemhi is 245 calendar days, the board's contracts with water users to agree to subordinate the minimum stream flow is capped at 100 days per year. Administration of the board's contracts with water users resides with Watership 74 and the Idaho Water Water Transactions Fund of the Bonneville Power Administration has funded annual and permanent subordination agreements with over a dozen water users since the 2008. So the take-home here is that while agreements subordinate on their own only on paper, without that board's help, the minimum water at L6, there would be no legal mechanism to protect that subordinate water in stream. So to be clear, Mr. Chairman, the L6 diversion is the critical pinch point in the Lemhi River Basin. And without the passage corridor provided by the minimum stream flow, near 20 miles of primation exponing habitat located 50 miles upstream of L6 would be inaccessible to adult salmon migrating after high water, and spring and fall juvenile outmigration would be adversely delayed. And for nearly 20 years, the board has had the long-term goal of securing 25 CFS permanently at L6. Currently, the board holds 16.28 CFS under permanent conservation usement, and the remainder of the minimum stream flow is met through annual agreements with participating water users. The board's minimum stream flow also benefits from groundwater mitigation condition from the city of Salmon's public golf course that provides an additional 2.4 CFS past L6 during the irrigation season. So the next slide is going to provide an overview of the subordination demand from the last 15 years, but this graph shows a 30-year mean stream flow below L6 from 1993 to 2022 in blue versus the mean 2021 stream flow at below L6 in yellow and orange in 2022 in orange. On both 21 and 22, we saw extended periods of low flow on either end of brief high-flow events, and total subordination demand in both those years exceeded 100 days, which required 30-day emergency job response contracts with willing water users. So this goes without saying that administration of the board's contracts for the lower Lemhi minimum stream flow requires a competent water master and a good working relationship with the local water district and senior water users. So this graph has got a lot of information, but it shows the total acre feet per year respectively from annual and permanent subordination contracts used to meet the L6 minimum stream flow when not met naturally through irrigation season. And to put the annual acre foot not diverted and associated landowner payments in context, depicted in the graph are the total number of days requiring subordination to meet the minimum stream flow and the percent normal precipitation at the Lemhi River snow tell site. So over the last 15 irrigation seasons, Watership 74 has administered the board's subordination agreements an average of 51 days per year, with a max of 123 days in 2021 and a low of five days from 2009 to 2011. And annual cost to maintain the minimum stream flow has ranged from $137,000 to $9,000. Again, funding for the water transaction compensation, the water user compensation, and the Watership administration has largely come from the Idaho Corps of Bonneville Power with additional funding coming from the NOAA Pacific Coast Sam Recovery Fund when needed. So to move towards the goal of protecting 25 CFS permanently at L6 in perpetuity, for consideration, Mr. Chairman, tomorrow's board meeting, staff proposed a permanent subordination agreement with Rugelund-Wellard on five irrigation water rights with priority dates of 1875 to 1888 totaling 0.52 CFS from the L7 diversion. And this permanent conservation usement would be deeded to the pertinent Lemhi County tax loss as the earlier permanent conservation usements that the board has purchased. Mr. Wellard has never participated in the lower Lemhi minimum stream flow program to date, but he's been a local concrete contractor in the Lemhi Basin for over 30 years, helping to maintain and install fish screens with the Idaho Fishing Game Fish Screen Program. And for your information, Mr. Chairman, the program to increase program participation in February 2024, staff conducted targeted landowner outreach for all irrigation water rights with a priority of 1895 or earlier at the L6, L7, L8A, and L9 diversions, which totaled over 150 CFS. And Mr. Wellard responded to that solicitation, and was excited that I had the opportunity to contribute to the long-term maintenance of the lower Lemhi minimum stream flow, and would be the first permanent conservation useman executed by the board for the L6 minimum stream flow since 2019. This permanent transaction has also received approval from the Columbia Basin Water Transactions Program Technical Advisory Committee, and funding is available in 2025 from the Idaho Corps of Water Transactions Fund. The cost of the permanent transaction is based on a 2024 land appraisal, which established a price of $220,000 per CFS. And for reference, the last Lemhi minimum stream flow evaluation was completed in 2017, where the value was $100,000 per CFS. An additional $12,000 per CFS will be placed in the Watership Action subcount of the board's revolving development account to compensate Watership 74 for the permanent administration of Mr. Wellard's easement. So total cost of the Wellard permanent transaction is going to be $120,240. And it will bring the total amount of permanent protected flow in the lower Lemhi to 17.35 CFS. So to reiterate, the junior minimum stream flow water right at L6 created the legal mechanism for the state to call for subordinate senior water rights in stream during irrigation season. And in practice, the minimum stream flow eliminates a passage barrier to 50 miles upstream main stand habitat. And since 2001, concurrent habitat projects completed by partners have led to a significant increase in juvenile salmon production despite stagnant or declining adult escaping to the basin. And this figures underscores how far we've come regarding flow interest passage at L6 in the past 30 years. The oldest water right in L6 is 1869 priority, and for well over 100 years, irrigators constructed channel-spanning push-up dams before and after high water, before the current Obermeyer weir was designed by the Bureau of Reclamation in 1996. And while that historic push-up dam was gone, water management remained a challenge to balance the needs of irrigators and salmon recovery until the board's minimum stream flow program was established in 2004. And knock on wood, but the transaction program has been operating at L6 without major issue for 20 years. So to visualize minimum flows and dispassage in the lower Lemhi, here's the spring juvenile outmigration timing and early season administration of L6 minimum stream flow contracts. The yellow line is the 2022 Lemhi hydrograph below L6. The blue line is our 35 CFS minimum stream flow. And the black bars are our 2022 Chinook smolts encountered at the Fishing Game screen trap in the lower Lemhi entered to the ocean. And now visualizing adult run timing and L6 minimum stream flow contracts administered after high water. The yellow line is our 2021 Lemhi hydrograph below L6. The red line is our 35-25 CFS minimum stream flow with a July 1 cutoff. And the blue bars are our pit-tagged adult Chinook observed at the Idaho Fishing Game lower Lemhi array. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to use the last few slides to make the board aware of emerging issues with diverse infrastructure at L6, which essentially boils down to a form versus function. So when designed by the Bureau of Reclamation in 1996, the threat of ESA take and subsequent minimum stream flow negotiations had not yet occurred. So the existing infrastructure was designed under a completely different water management paradigm than currently exists in the lower Lemhi. And as a result, the Obermeyer weir has enforced a function in ways that was not designed, which leading to the automatic diversion plates and head gates reaching the end of their usable life, perhaps far earlier than anticipated by all partners in the basin. Furthermore, design considerations for the fish for the adult fish ladder assume that flows less than 30 CFS, there would be quote little if any adult fish movement in the basin or in the river. And as you saw on the previous slide, adult salmon are indeed able to navigate the lower Lemhi River at 25 CFS late season flow, but despite the injured fish movement, the fish ladder does not currently meet National Marine Fisheries Service passage criteria of six-inch drop per linear foot. So in summary, the 30-year-old diversion infrastructure is obsolete and is no longer working well for local irrigators or ESA-listed fish in its current state of repair. And in fall of 22, staff identified the emerging infrastructure issue at L6 and its potential to affect the administration of the board's minimum stream flow on the lower Lemhi. And for the past three years, staff have led the collaborative effort to bring together state, federal, and water user stakeholders to identify options across the repair, replacement, and consolidation spectrum. And in July of 2024, the Bureau of Reclamation committed to funding alternatives analysis of the L6 and L7 Obermeyer weirs, as both diversions share common components and were designed concurrently by the Bureau of Reclamation in 1990s. Reclamation then brought on QRS Consulting in September of 24 as a subcontractor to complete the alternatives analysis. Kickoff meeting was held with water users in this past January, and a meeting discussed the draft report with water users was just held in April. The final alternatives analysis report is slated to be completed next month by QRS and Bureau of Reclamation. And while an upper sand basin watershed program project sponsor has yet to be identified, it is the intent of the basin partners to do so shortly in order to move forward with a FY26/27 design build of the recommended alternative, with buy-in from the L6, L7 lateral water user associations who own the diversions. And here is a draft rehabilitation plan for L6. The alternatives analysis proposes to rehabilitate and replace key components of the existing infrastructure, such as the diversion weir and head gates, and move the adult fish ladder off-stream and have maintenance for the adult fish ladder shift from the water users to the Idaho Fishing Game Fish Screen Program. Rehabilitation of L6 also includes piping a short section of open ditch and moving the fish screen, both of which are liable to be compromised by the Lemhi River during high-flow events. And as alluded to, consolidation of L6 and L7 is also being considered, which may be logistically challenging from a water right perspective, but may likely be cost-effective for both construction and long-term maintenance of the resulting infrastructure. So here we're looking at the complete elimination of the L6 diversion and where L6 water rights would be administered at the L7 ditch or the L7 diversion approximately one mile upstream. And 45 CFS of L6 water would be conveyed through an automated splitter and conveyed through a pipe to the existing L6 ditch near the location of the existing L6 fish group. And lastly, here we see the conceptual consolidation at L7, which with a much larger fish screen and head date and similar to the L6 rehabilitation plan and off-stream adult fish ladder. And as part of this regional collaboration on this aging infrastructure, in 2024, Northwest Power and Conservation Council assisted the Idaho Fishing Game Screen Program, secured upwards of $4 million non-recurring maintenance funds from Bonneville Power that could be used as a match for the L6 and L7 infrastructure improvements, with the caveat that Fishing Game's maintenance funding must be spent by end of year 2026. And while final price tag is not yet known for this project, additional funding will certainly be needed. Potential sources of funding include NOAA Pacific Coast Sam Recovery Fund, BOA Water Smart, and Idaho Water Source Board's aging infrastructure grants. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will stand for any questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, John. Questions for John, board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Brian.
John, I didn't hear quite well. So the transaction was about 0.6 CFS?
0.52.
0.52.
Yeah. And just for reference, I think the smallest quantity of minimum usement we have is like for like 0.1 or 0.3, so it's not the smallest conservation usement we ever purchased, but it definitely gets us closer to that 25 CFS goal.
And the price has doubled over how many years, did you say?
Roughly eight years, the price has doubled.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Pat.
John, do you have to do the construction on L6 during the winter?
So the plan would be, it would either be the winter work window, but I think partners are interested in trying to get a variance on that in-stream work window under the ESA to do it when we are at full irrigation, so like 25 CFS going through a bypass. And so that would reduce the construction cost tremendously, and it would need a cofferdam in the river. When we're getting about 200 CFS in the winter, it'd be 25 CFS in some, you know.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
John.
Are there any other potential takers for conservation usements in this area?
Not at this time, but I am in discussions with the city of Salmon on some creative, yeah, discussions on some additional conservation using water. But after, you know, after about 100 landowner letters went out, I got 100 responses. So, but that was before the updated value as well. So the hope is that word of mouth gets out, that price has gone up, and maybe we get some more takers.
But we, through the lease program, we are acquiring enough water to meet the 25.
Correct, correct. Yes, yeah, through the annual agreements, we're able to stay whole on that minimum stream flow.
Okay. All right, anything else? I think we're good. Thank you for the report, and we'll see you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Okay, next up, adjudication update?
Evan Rhoda, the Department's Adjudication Section Manager, will give this update, Mr. Chairman.
All but done, right?
And while Jennifer's pulling that up, I should report that Evan Rhoda is relatively new in this role. What, last three months? Been in the job?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
New to the department or just new to this role?
10 years with the department, just new to this role. I supervise the northern adjudication staff for the last eight years.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if we connect to this when I say, I'm just glad you're just.
I'm guessing that laptop is modernized by IT.
I was just sitting here thinking, if I were to buy a laptop for Jennifer, it wasn't like the state system.
It's still got to interface with the state system.
But I mean, she's, like, I bet I could get on my iPad. Maybe we have one bootlegged computer.
Yeah, I think I'm ready to get started. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the board. As was introduced, I'm Evan Rhoda. I manage the Adjudication Section for the Department of Water Resources. And this morning, I'm just going to be providing a program update as well as a current status update on our active adjudications throughout the state.
Okay, welcome, Evan. I'm sorry, I was distracted, complaining about the state.
No problem, no, Mr. Chairman.
Everything, yes. Okay.
So just to begin with a little background, the Northern Idaho adjudications were initiated with the passage of Idaho Code 421406B, which stated that the effective management of the waters of Northern Idaho requires that a comprehensive determination of the nature, extent, and priority of the water rights of users of both surface and groundwater need to be determined. Northern Idaho adjudications were split into three phases. Phase one, the Corral and Spokane River Basin adjudication. Phase two, the Palouse River Basin adjudication. And phase three, the Clark Fork Pondry River Basin adjudication. Implementation, in 2006, the Idaho State Legislature authorized IDWR to proceed with the planning and implementation of the first three adjudications in Northern Idaho, beginning with the Corral and Spokane River Basin adjudication. Commencement order for this first phase of the CSRVA was issued by the court on November 12th, 2008. And this is a map depicting the CSRVA boundaries there. Administrative basins 91 through 95 were included in the CSRVA. And our current status of the Corral and Spokane River Basin adjudication, as I said, the commencement order was issued November 12th, 2008. Director's report for the last remaining basin in the CSRVA, basin 95, Part II, that was filed with the court February 26th, 2019. To date, we have 14,299 total claims reported to the court in the CSRVA, with 13,893 claims now decreed. Some outstanding issues remaining. Basin 95, we still have 19 objections to nine state-based subcases. This includes the Vista Power Rights, as well as the governor's lake-level right for Corral Lake. Some Federal Reserve claims are still outstanding as well. We have 286 active tribal claims. The court has issued an order granting motion to amend claims, order for expedited director's report, order granting motion to modify amended final order disallowing water right claims. That was issued by the court April 1st, 2024, which has largely been a part of the settlement proceedings, I think, on that. The trial is currently scheduled for two months to take place in Corral Lake in 2026, April 2026. Moving to phase two, the Palouse River Basin adjudication, this is entirely basin 87, administrative basin 87, which is right in our neck of the woods where we're at now. And our current status of the Palouse River Basin adjudication, commencement order for this was issued March 1st, 2017, and our director's report was filed August 2nd, 2021. So as you can tell from that timeframe, this is one that we worked through the COVID pandemic, and I'm rather proud of the ability of my staff to stay on task with that and get that done actually ahead of schedule. This director's report was filed with the court August 2nd, 2021, including recommendations for 1,987 state-based claims and abstracts for 197 claims based on federal law. To date, we have 2,299 total claims reported with the court and 1,984 claims that now have been decreed. Some outstanding issues remaining in the Palouse River Basin. We have objections to 76 state-based subcases remaining. These objections were filed primarily against claims listing springs as the water source. We also have 201 Federal Reserve claims. This includes 181 filed by the Department of Justice, 18 tribal provisional claims, and two US Forest Service claims, which we anticipate will be more once they're split apart. Phase three, this is the phase we're actively initiating right now. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Could I just?
Al, got a question.
You're going to have a long way to go. So I had a question on this. Objections to the springs, are those objections by the United States and the tribe based on springs and fountains conditions in the tribal treaty?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Barker, those are. Those are based on the language in that treaty.
But they're, so basically, there's not much left to go on the rest of the state-based claims?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Proceeding now with phase three, the Clark Fork Pondry River Basin adjudication, CFPRVA. This includes administrative basins 97 and 96. So our current status of the CFPRVA, IDWR received funding authority from the 2020 legislative session. Commencement order for the CFPRVA was entered by the court June 15th, 2021. Like the other adjudications in the state, this allows for the deferral of small domestic and stockwater rights as defined by Idaho Code 42111. First commencement notices for the CFPRVA were mailed September 3rd, 2021, notes for basin 97. Final round of notices were mailed November 28th, 2022, those were for basin 96. Our preliminary director's report mailing went out for basin 97, Part 1, August 7th, 2024. And what that is, Mr. Chairman, is essentially what we call a notice of error, where we provide claimants a chance to review those recommendations and check them for errors before we submit them to the court, where it's a lot easier to get those corrected. And that helps reduce those objections that we get later. where it's a lot easier to get those corrected, and that helps reduce those, uh, objections that we get later. Director's report was filed for basin 97, part one, uh, December 17th, 2024. And that included 1,081 recommendations, uh, as well as, um, well, I don't remember the abstracts on that one. Uh, the objection deadline, you know, it did just pass, uh, May 12th, 2025 was the objection deadline. And with that, I'm actually very pleased to report that we only had 18 objections to state-based recommendations on those. So, so a very low number, considering the, the large volume of claims submitted to the court. Response deadline to those objections is going to be July 28th, 2025. And our director's report for basin 97, part two, uh, we're on task and, and currently anticipate to file without the court in late fall of this year. This is just a graph showing our progress in basin 97, part two. Uh, the blue lines there recommend the to, uh, represent the total claims, and the red line is the recommendations that we've been moving up. Um, the green, as you can see, is that's our, our goal for the preliminary director's report mailing that notice of error period I described there. Um, and we are on target for reaching that. Uh, these last few months, we're kind of working the bottom of the barrel, the claims at the bottom that tend to be a little bit stickier and take a little bit more correspondence and field exam work. So some topics of interest in the CFPRBA include the water right operation for the Priest Lake Outlet Control Structure. Um, this is, uh, dictated by Idaho Code, uh, 70507, uh, minimum stream flow water right in the Priest River, defining the elements of the governor's 1927 priority water rights for Priest Lake and Lake Pondure. Albany Falls Dam, operated by the US Corps, uh, Corps of Engineers. Um, the Army Corps of Engineers just has a history of not filing for claims, uh, in the SRBA. The Dorsak Reservoir would be an example of that, where they did not file a claim for that operation. And lastly, the Kalispell Tribe. Uh, Kalispell Tribe has a, a, a large number of claims that they filed in that vicinity. Um, 13 claims were filed in basin 97 and 12 in basin 96, those were all just state-based, uh, claims filed by the Kalispell Tribe. Uh, but they've also filed 45 off, off reservation minimum stream flow, uh, Federal Reserve claims for fish habitat. Uh, those were filed by the United States on behalf of the Kalispell Tribe, with diversion rates ranging from 15.3 CFS to 15,600 CFS. Uh, three additional and separate off reservation minimum stream flow claims were filed by the Kalispell Tribe on the Pondure River. Uh, those range from 19,900 CFS and 20,200 CFS, and the Clark Fork River for 15,600 CFS. So the Kootenay River Basin adjudication, KRVA, this is including basin 98. Uh, this was originally carved out of the Northern Idaho adjudications, um, for various reasons, but, um, as we've adjudicated the other parts of the state, the momentum really built, uh, behind the, the commencement of this one. And, and the local, local population there really wanted us to get this done. So, uh, our IDWR staff met with the Kootenay Valley Resource Initiative to discuss the potential adjudication on February 12th, 2024. And it's just a testament to how badly they wanted this to happen. House Bill 687 to authorize the Kootenay River Basin adjudication was signed by Governor Little, Little on March 28th, 2024. Petition to commence the Kootenay River Basin adjudication was filed with the court January 3rd, 2025. And a hearing on that petition to commence, uh, is currently scheduled for July 15th, 2025. Um, I'll note here that, uh, the initial main, uh, setup that I sent to Jennifer for you on that note on July 1st, it was a typo. The hearing is going to be July 15th, uh, so just in case your, your notes have July 1st, it'll be July 15th on that. And our tentative plan, uh, to begin claims taking for the KRVA is going to be this next spring, 2026. Uh, moving in lastly to the Bear River Basin adjudications, the very southeastern corner of the state. Um, our staff has been actively sending out mo, uh, notices on this one, just getting everybody informed that the adjudication is commenced. And, uh, we've just been largely taking in a large number of claims there, uh, in the bear. So a little background on the bear, the Bear River Basin adjudication, uh, was authorized in the 2020 legislative session, uh, with the passage of 421406C. The commencement order was issued by the court June 15th, 2021. And our first commencement notices were mailed January 30th, 2023, uh, which was for basin 11, group one. Uh, the fourth batch of commencement notices, basin 13, group two, that was mailed June 19th, 2024. Um, 6,194 state-based claims have been filed as of May 1st, 2025, so we got taken a large number of claims in that area. First, uh, director's report, we're currently planning for 2026 on that and, and anticipating that submission at that point. Using two screens here to see my notes. This graph here will show you the claims taking status. So the red bar represents the incoming claims, the blue bar down at the bottom represent our claim recommendations. As you can see, the recommendations are starting to tick up, but they're still vastly behind the incoming claims. We received over 250 claims there just this last month, so we are still taking in a high number of claims. And I will also note that much of those Bear River claims are more complex than small domestics. We have large irrigation projects and things like that, so it does take a bit more time to get those through. That's all I have for the status updates, so if that all stands for questions, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you, Evan, uh, board members, questions for Evan? Brian?
Mr. Chairman, Evan, does the, on the bear, does the adjudication, is it like a two rivers at the state line? Utah's completely separate from ours, or are there claims that cross the border or?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Oldstead, uh, there's, there is some complexities, uh, with interstate issues. There you have Wyoming on the one side and Utah on the other. Um, the Bear River actually crosses state lines at least six times. So, so there is some inter-agency, uh, interstate issues that we have to work out there with those other state, um, other states. So there is some complexities there as far as that goes. Um, and I know that we're in talks with those different organizations, as well as the different entities that have a, a stake in the Bear River, in the Bear, Bear Lake as well.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Al.
So Evan, I thought I heard, and maybe I didn't hear it correctly, but I thought I heard that in the Clark Fork Pondure adjudication, there were claims that were made by downstream Washington State tribes for in, for flows in Idaho, is that right?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Barker, um, those were the, the, the claims that I described that were filed off reservation. Um, the, the tribe in question, the Kalispell Tribe, they had their, the actual reservation is, I believe, in USK, Washington, which is, which is well downstream. Um, and I think the basis of those in-stream claims that they filed in that basin is on the basis that the fish rearing habitat is in those tributaries to the lake, which eventually can find their way down to where the reservation is, where they rely on that fishery.
Chairman, go ahead. So is, do we have any precedent for recognizing, uh, claimants in other states for water rights, for reserve water rights in Idaho?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Barker, at this time, I, I really couldn't comment on that. I'm not too sure on the legal precedents behind those filings. We haven't researched them too far, they haven't gotten as far down the track yet. Um, but I can certainly consult with our legal staff and, and get that answer back to you.
Oh, that's okay, I was just curious, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Evan, appreciate your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Okay, uh, Northern Regional Manager update, times?
Yep, Michelle Richmond is here, and she'll give that report.
Yes, we are, welcome, Michelle.
All right, well, thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman and board members. Glad to be here. I'm going to, uh, provide program updates and talk about regional priorities and next steps for the region, as well as discussing some of the Priest Lake operations. So. So here's our organization chart for Northern, and it's set up a little bit differently from other regions. We have six programs, and those are water rights, both for adjudication and new allocations. And we have groundwater protection, stream channel protection, safety events, and hydrogeology. And a couple of things to point out, no other region has both, uh, adjudication and allocations under one roof. So that's unique to Northern. And none of the other regions have stream channel protection specialists or hydrologists sitting in their region. Um, other regions have staff that contribute to the hydro, hydrology programs, but not a full-time staff in their region. And, and then the state office provides support to those programs for those regions. Couple of other things to mention, it was brought up that Evan was promoted to adjudication section manager this spring, and he's now remotely managing adjudication staff in Boise. And we're looking to backfill his old supervisor position. And we're also working to fill two water resource agent positions and one engineering position. As for the adjudication, Evan gave a good update. Uh, we have the Clark Fork Pondure River Basin adjudication moving along really successfully, and about 8,500 claims that have been filed and 2,000 recommendations that have been completed. And the CFPA, CFPRBA numbers are on the right side of the chart. And I like to show this compared to the Palouse River Basin adjudication, which was at the 2,000 level. So it just kind of gives you a, a scale. And as Evan said, the basin 97, part one, director's report was issued last year. And basin 97, part two, director's report is on track to be issued this fall. Then, can you guys hear me pretty well? I need to.
I, I can.
Is that better?
That's probably better, are we?
Sorry.
Where we're, or our broadcast stream, do we have good audio there?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And then, uh, this winter, after this winter, we'll put a pause on the CFPRBA, and we'll jump into the Kootenay River Basin adjudication in spring of 2026. And with the KRVA in mind, Northern was, has been operating some outreach in Bonners Ferry each month. And this has established a presence of the department in the Boundary County area in preparation for the KRVA. And one other note, we know from experience that the whole region will be busier once the KRVA goes into full swing. And this is because, because of the claims themselves, but also because claimants learn as they're applying that they need to also apply for, uh, applications for permit in some cases. And this is shown on the next slide. So this slide shows applications for permit received by all regions for the calendar years 2018 through 2024. And Northern's shown in purple on the top. And this is showing that Northern has processed between 40 and 70% of the department's applications each year over the past seven years. And we were busiest from 2021 to 2023, and that matches up with the active claims taking for the CFPRBA. And we anticipate that the region will be similarly busy with a spike during the KRVA claims taking. So even in the absence of claims taking, the region has a constant flow of applications. And this is due in part to continued population growth and to the fact that all basins in Northern are open for appropriation. So moving on, uh, well construction keeps Scott Potter pretty busy. Over the past year, he had an inspection rate of 57%, which was well about the strategic benchmark goal of 28%. And that helps the department meet their overall goal for an inspection rate. And because of Scott's efforts, the region continues to have good rapport with the drilling community, and that has promoted frequent communication and compliance from the drillers. Uh, Northern staffer also conducting public outreach, like the State Resources Fair in Bennoah County, uh, that's photographed here, and that was held near St. Mary's early in spring. So moving on to the stream channel protection program, many of the projects in Northern this past year, uh, were really focused on improving fish passage. And this is accomplished by replacing culverts either with bridges or bottomless arched culverts. And the photos show a project done by the Nez Perce Tribe at a location southeast of Orophino. And you can see that the head gate in the, the four photo on the right, or I'm sorry, on the left, that diverted water to a pond and away from a flood plain. And the after photo on the right shows the head gate was removed and the diversion was filled in so that now the water stays in the main channel for flood plain reconnection and fish habitat improvement. Another point to make out, or make about the stream channel program is that due to recent changes in the federal workforce, some of the federal staff that work with our staff are no longer employed. And so that the, the employees that do remain have heavier workloads. For example, employees that have left Army Corps of Engineers in Corral Lake, uh, they were typically reviewing joint applications for permit for stream channel alterations. And with those absences, uh, their review may take longer or may not occur, we're not sure. We're, we're watching and staying tuned to see what happens, but we'll continue to issue, issue our, our department's own permits. As for the hydrogeology program, the snapshot of the snowfall equivalent as of March 31st paints a picture for Northern. The snowfall at high elevations was between 92 and 101%, which is average to a little below average, and that doesn't sound so bad. But the problem is that lower elevation sites receive below average snow. And this is problematic because we relied on high precipitation years like we had in 2017 to provide natural recharge in the region. And we've typically had good years about every seven years. And we're currently year, in year eight of a cycle without a good recharge year. So then, the natural recharge is especially important for the Rattran Prairie aquifer and also for the shallow aquifers in the Columbia River basalt. And those would be the, the Wannaham in the Palouse and the Saddle Mountain aquifer in Lewiston. And in contrast, the lower aquifers. Mountain aquifer in Lewiston. And in contrast, the lower aquifers are less responsive to natural recharge because actual pumping overshadows precipitation. So we need a good recharge here, appears. The story there, little more about the Palouse. In early March, we met with the city of Moscow and the city of Lewiston, and that was at the request of the governor's office. And the intent of the meeting was to initiate a conversation between the two cities regarding potential for collaboration and opportunities for points of diversion on the Clearwater River. Lewiston is rehabilitating their point of diversion on the Clearwater, and they're moving it upstream. And Moscow's exploring a new point of diversion on the Clearwater. And I know we'll hear a little bit more about that this morning. And lastly, we're continuing to expand the monitoring network throughout the region. And locally, we're trying to add some sites at the University of Idaho as well as city of Moscow for existing wells. Also, when new wells go into the deep aquifer in Lewiston, as they go in, we're working with land donors to add specific wells that are of interest into our monitoring network. And we're also continuing to collect rock chip samples to further characterize the geology of the area. And as for water levels in Lewiston, the declines in the Grand Ron Aquifer are still present, and they have potential to drop to year 2021 values, which has been a worst-case year so far. And declines are as much as 16 feet in places in the Grand Ron. Okay, moving on to the safety of dams, we are in the process of hiring a new engineer, very close, fingers crossed. They should be starting in early June. And in the past few years here in Northern, we've had three new facilities in development and three major dam modifications. And those kind of projects seem to happen regularly here in Northern. Another point to make in this region is that it has eight mine tailings and poundment structures. And those are along I-90. We inspect them on a yearly basis. They go in and out of operation depending on the price of commodities. But when they are in operation, mine tailings are continually being added to the structures. So they need to be inspected more regularly than our more traditional dams that are, for the most part, static once they're built. Okay, next I have a few slides to give a glimpse of a presentation I recently gave to the Priest River Watershed Group in April. And as you know, the dam modifications were complete at the Priest Lake Outlet Dam last year. However, the six-inch gate height increase was completed in 2022. And the modifications didn't come with a user's manual. So over the winter, we developed a best practices document, and that focuses on managing the lake and the river as a complete system and proposes how to utilize the extra six inches of gate height and lake volume. So just to recap statute, the 70-507 that Evan had mentioned, in years that are identified as a wet type of year, the lake will be held at three feet, just as it has since the dam was built. In years designated as dry, the lake will be held between three and three and a half feet. And so this just means that great care must be taken to designate the type of year as wet or dry. And this year, Cara Ferguson, a hydrologist in the state office, made the determination that this will be a dry type of year. And to make that determination, she looked at the U.S. drought monitor, soil moisture reports with NASA, NRCS forecasts, and NOAA seasonal weather forecasts. So with it being a dry year, we'll aim to hold the lake between 3.31 and 3.44 feet. And as shown for the year 2023, we'll start by matching inflow. And this chart shows outflow through the dam. As inflow comes down naturally after peak runoff, we'll reduce the outflow through the dam and in this way hold the lake up. And when we brought the flow through the dam down to 200 CFS, we'll switch from lake level maintenance mode to river flow maintenance mode, which is shown by the flat line in the graph. In this mode, we hold the river...
Just a second, Michelle. Ms. Cole Hansen has a question.
Yes.
Michelle, can you tell us about what time of year is the determination made, whether or not it's going to be a drought year, or a dry year, or a wet year?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Cole Hansen, we will be making that determination. We're looking closely, starting in March and April. And the NRCS reports come out once a month, early in month, every month in spring. So in April is the key month. And then May, we continue to make that determination. So by May, we know, and we publicize that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead there.
Michelle, follow Joanne's question. Is this about the Priest Lake Basin or the whole area in general and the Panhandle? Your determination?
It's for specifically, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, you're fine.
For the Priest Lake Basin.
Okay.
Yeah. So once we're in that mode of holding the lake at a constant, or sorry, the river at a constant 200 CFS, then we are going to allow the lake level to gradually drop from evaporation and from declining inflows into the lake. And for the remainder of the recreational season, we'll monitor the lake level to make sure that it isn't dropping too quickly. And we may need to adjust the outflow down if needed to accommodate actual conditions. So where did that 200 CFS come from? It's came recommended as a minimum flow in the Priest River Basin Plan per Idaho Fishing Game. And they identified the 200 CFS as a minimum flow rate for aquatic habitat for the months of August through October. Another question you may be thinking about is why aren't we trying for the 300 CFS, which is the board's minimum stream flow water rate? And we ran through the numbers, and we don't have enough volume basically in those six inches to accommodate the 300 CFS. So that's where we landed on. We can aim for the 200 CFS and try and keep the flow above that as best we can.
Michelle, just follow up. But basically, the plan is to take this extra available stored water and allocate that out to make sure that we maintain the best flow we can in the Priest River. It may even be less than 200.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
But we won't close the gates and dry the river up, which is the quandary we were in, I think, in 2015 or '16.
That is the correct interpretation, and it's better than it has been.
Yeah. It gives us a lot more flexibility. I'm sorry you interrupted Dale. Did you have a...
Yes, a follow-up on what Jeff was talking about. Now, if the lake's got to maintain a 3.0 level by statute, so if you get into late August, September, you won't go below that, even though the river is going to suffer from those consequences of the lake being maintained at that 3.0 level.
That's correct.
So you can't, because water's not available, you can't supplement the river then much more than what you're already doing.
Yeah, so we're using the extra volume that we didn't have before the gate height increase and before the statute change. We're using that extra volume and starting at a higher lake level than three. So this year, we're aiming at 3.38 is what we're aiming for. And then we'll, while the inflow's coming down naturally, the runoff is coming down, we'll keep the lake up to that 3.38. And then, once, because of those drops in flow, we're down to 200 CFS going through the dam, we'll just hold that 200 CFS and let evaporation and declining inflows into the lake bring the lake level down. And we will have to watch it closely to make sure that we do not drop below the three.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. At that point, the river will probably suffer...
That it would, yeah.
To some degree, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And then switching gears to fall operations, back when the dam was built, historic agreements were arranged so that the lake would be held in summer for recreation. And then it was released each fall to provide water for downstream power production for Washington Water Power, which later became Avista. The state, however, has been operating the dam without the help of Avista since 2012, and those historic agreements are no longer happening. And this provides for flexibility in how we currently draw down the lake. So according to Fishing Game, again, in the Priest River Basin Plan, drawdown must be complete by November 1 each year to avoid de-watering the reds on the shores of the Priest Lake. And by starting drawdown on October 1, we can finish by November 1. Also, in the Priest River Basin Plan, Fishing Game recommends a maximum flow during drawdown of 1,000 CFS. And per Fishing Game, flows greater than 1,000 CFS during the drawdown would damage aquatic habitat. So the graph shows what our typical operations looked like over several decades. And as you can see, in 2024, this is the flow just downstream of the dam, was about 2,600 CFS. So going forward, we can cap the flow at 1,000 CFS, as shown by the red dotted line, and stop drawdown on November 1. The lake level would be to about one foot on November 1, and that would be our minimum lake level for the remainder of winter. Then in the spring, the lake level would be brought back up for the recreation season. And I do think it's important to bring the lake down to at least a foot in winter to make space for spring runoff.
Michelle, just to clarify, that before Fishing Game made these recommendations, basically, on October 1, we just opened the gates and let the lake drain?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we did open them. It was gradual. I don't know if you can see the stair step, and we kind of brought it up incrementally and tried not to do too much in one day. But at the top point, that's basically the gates are out of the water and the lake's just draining. Yeah. The goal this year and in future years, we'd put out more frequent communications to the public, since these operations differ from how operations were conducted over the last several decades. Another goal is to begin a data collection effort. And as I shared with the Priest River Watershed Group, stakeholders are beginning to cooperate and share data with each other and also with IDWR. And these stakeholders include the Kalispel Tribe, DEQ, Fishing Game, local residents, and the USGS. And the dots that you see on the map, the red dots and purple dots, represent some new inflow measurements that are being collected now, mainly by DEQ and stakeholders. And IDWR is also participating with DEQ in measurements at Granite Creek near Nordman, which is shown by the one red dot on the west side of the lake about halfway up, right about there. And we'll use this data to help estimate daily inflow into the lake by scaling up the flow that we observe at Granite Creek. The overall goal is to gather information and continue to make informed decisions with additional input from stakeholders going forward. We're also working on documentation. And as I said, over the winter, we developed a best practices document to capture recommendations and requirements in a comprehensive manual that informs future decision-making. And it'll be a living document that incorporates new information as it becomes available. We also developed a standard operations manual for the Priest Lake Dam. And both documents together kind of make up the user's manual for the dam, and they'll serve to train new staff on Priest Lake dam operations as they come onboard. And our region also worked with the planning section to develop an emergency action plan, or EAP. And that became required, and that was due to a rule change in 2023 that requires all significant hazard dams to have an EAP. So this past year, we focused on creating new documentation for the Priest Lake Outlet Dam. The ultimate goal is to plan for the future in regards to the dam. And in looking at the last 20 years, the 10 most recent years of those were drier than the prior 10 years. And the gate modifications provide a way to use the extra lake volume to strike a balance between the river and the lake. And one caveat is that the statute requires the lake to be held at three feet in years designated as wet. So in looking at the past several years, we know that many years flip from a wet type to a dry type of year, especially in the August to September timeframe. And then in those years that flip from wet to dry, it may be difficult to satisfy that three-foot lake level. And additionally, the river may take a hit. So it's just because we have to hold at that three feet, we don't have that extra volume to supplement the system in extreme conditions. So moving forward, the dam modifications and statute allow for flexibility in operations in dry types of years. And our goal will be to keep stakeholders informed as best practices are established with a new flexibility in gate operations. And that being said, we're in a good position to make the best of those years that we predict as a dry type of year. Our goals moving forward for the region will be to continue with public outreach as we are able to, especially concerning the KRBA. And we are also doing our best to keep up with our continuous workload this year so that we are well poised to begin claims taking for the KRBA next year. And our goal for 2026 will be to manage the increased regional load that we are anticipating. That is my update. I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Joanne. You have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Michelle. In the past report that you've given us, you showed the number of domestic... In the past report that you've given us, you showed the number of domestic of or. I guess domestic water wells being drilled and that the volume had increased significantly. Has that tapered off? Or is it maxed out? Are you still seeing a number of drinking water wells going in?
I believe it's still continuing to be. Kind of constant, continuous growth is what we're seeing.
And Mr. Chair, is that still a significant portion of your workload?
Yes, we have a significant amount of domestics that are applied for on a continual basis. Yeah.
Okay, Dale, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna shout back to Priest Lake. What is the lake level right now? Were you, the current one that you have?
It's, Mr. Van Stone, Mr. Chairman, I believe it's 2.91 feet.
2.9? So it's a little low?
Yes, so what happened? Was this year has been strange and it seems as though we have had a peak at three feet. And it and the lake has now started to come down. So it has been an interesting year and this points directly to the reason that I would like to monitor. Granite Creek because we do not have a way to. Know inflow. We have had to estimate it for yesterday. Based on calculations from changes in the reservoir and the outflow. But it's always for yesterday, so it's very reactive. And by having this monitoring on Granite Creek. We will hopefully be a little less reactive. It's still going to be an estimate.
Okay, uh, what's the flow of the river up by the dam? Is it still running pretty strong?
Yeah, it's about 3,000 CFS.
Oh boy, so are you trying to hold more water back right now, do you think?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Yeah, it's interesting how that works up there.
Very dynamic system.
Okay, other questions? Brian?
Mr. Chairman, Michelle, just curious, the um. We looked at that Sackett property, I think it was three years ago maybe that had been shut down by EPA or was that? I don't know if that was a stream channel alteration or Clean Water Act, but but. Then the court overturned that Sackett. Did they build on that plot or do you know or what's happened there?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Olson, I'm not familiar with that particular situation. Or I'm not remembering.
Yeah, well, it's I. It doesn't matter, I don't think, to us, but I was just curious because we looked at it and and. It was a, you know, a possible home site, but it was kind of a frog pond too, so.
Not really your worry. I think there was another fly got in the ointment with the sack, so. I I I don't think they've been able to construct, but I could be wrong about that too. Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Michelle. Looks like you guys are working hard up here and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, administrative rules update?
Yeah, we got Eric Bo on by Zoom.
Hello, Eric. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, everything good audio? All right, is audio working okay?
Eric, we can't hear you. Can you hear us?
Can you give us a thumbs up if you can hear us?
I can hear you all.
Okay.
So it's possible that you might have to type up a one, two, and hit pound to unmute yourself? Not sure where you're located. It looks like you're just in your office.
Jennifer, can you hear me okay?
While we resolve the technical difficulties, might be time for a five-minute break.
Yeah, we should do that, yeah.
Thank you, right?
So you're very wise.
This should be our speaker.
Yeah.
So just let me try something.
Will you try again, Eric? I think it's us, not you.
I'm gonna continue trying to up the volume.
Can you hear me? I can hear you guys great.
Will you speak again?
Can you hear me? I can hear you guys great.
I think we're all the way up on our volume. We are. Okay, let me try something.
Can you hear me okay? I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Sorry about that. That was on an hour again. Oh, Mark, that's too bad. That's too bad about that. Well, no, I should keep wandering around and saying.
Hear me okay? I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you well, but wireless.
Perfect.
Apologies for that.
No worries. Glad it's not me.
That's why I'm always playing with my ear. Volume's up.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we back online and recording Jennifer?
Yeah.
Okay, next up, Mr. Patton, it will be Eric Bo with the administrative groups update. We have sound now, Eric?
I can hear you great, can you hear me?
Perfect, you're doing great.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to give a brief update on the department's rulemaking efforts. We're currently in the 2025-2026 rulemaking period, which is the fifth and final period of the current cycle that we're in. We're conducting three ZBR rulemakings. They include 370204, the Shoshone-Bannock Travel Water Supply Bank rules, which are board rules, 370307, the Stream Channel Alteration Rules, which again are board rules, and then 370312, the Water District 34 Water Distribution Rules, which are IDWR rules. We recently completed the first round of public meetings for the Shoshone-Bannock Travel Water Supply Bank rules. That public meeting was held on May 14th. We did walk away from the first meeting questioning, you know, whether or not to repeal the rule and just adhere to the Fort Hall agreement. However, after legal review, we decided that it would be best to keep it, so we'll likely see an abbreviated version. The next meeting hasn't been formally scheduled yet, but it's going to be likely in late June, and I anticipate that being the last meeting hopefully. For the Stream Channel Alteration Rules, the public meeting was held on April 30th. From that meeting, no major changes came out. We were just focusing on streamlining the rule in accordance with the executive order. The next meeting for that, again, it hasn't been formally scheduled. We anticipate doing that in the coming week, and it likely will be in mid-June and will likely be our last meeting hopefully. Finally, the Water District 34 Rules. The public meeting was held on April 23rd. Again, nothing major came out of that meeting, and the next meeting is scheduled next week on May 27. And we anticipate that could be the last meeting, we'll see how that one goes. And that's a basic update on where we're at on the rulemaking front. I'm happy to stand for any questions Mr. Chairman or the board may have.
Thank you, Eric. Board members, any questions for Eric? Okay, I hope that all comes together without too many more meetings. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Mr. Patton, next up, the Blue Space and Aquifer Committee.
Yes.
There he went.
It's like Tyler Palmer will lead off with that one.
Mr. Chairman, Steve, members of the board, really appreciate the time today to provide an update on our Blue Space and Alternate Water Supply efforts. And I will dive right in, I'm Tyler Palmer, I work for the City of Moscow as Public Works Director and Deputy City Administrator and am the Chair of the Blue Space and Aquifer Committee. I know that the board is very aware at this point, having seen us for many, many years, about the Blue Space and Aquifer. The Blue Space and Aquifer is the primary and sole water source for the domestic supply in cities of Moscow and Pullman and for the independent water systems that are operated by the universities of Washington State and Idaho respectively. The users, the pumpers in this basin cooperate through an entity known as the Blue Space and Aquifer Committee. This has been a cooperative entity that has been in place for a long time under different names. It started as the Pullman-Moscow Regional Water Committee and then eventually in the 90s became the Blue Space and Aquifer Committee. As the board is aware, there has been a declining aquifer in this area as the primary and sole source of water since it was tapped in the late 1890s. There are Artesian wells that were highly productive in the area that have been in decline since. That decline continues. While we've seen some improvement in the level of decline, we're still seeing it about 0.7 feet per year decline that we're seeing, and that's in the lower aquifer. I should note that, as Michelle mentioned earlier, there has been some recovery in the upper aquifer, but that's primarily due to the city of Moscow not pumping that upper aquifer. And there are several reasons for that, I'd be happy to elaborate on, but that aquifer has shown recovery with diminished pumping by the city of Moscow. The city of Moscow is the only major pumping entity that has wells in the upper aquifer. Last time we were before the board, we were discussing the pursuit of the Clearwater River as an alternate supply. The board allocated $182,500 to this effort, and I am here to report on the progress that has been made toward that project or in pursuit of that project. The city of Moscow released an RFQ for the project, and we had submittals. From the submittals, there were HDR Engineering was selected as the consultant. HDR has done previous work, they were actually the consultant that did work on the 2019 preliminary study of the Clearwater River as an alternative. And so there are four major components of the project that we are planning to launch and that we are on the cusp of getting going on. There's the water supply assessment, and so this project will assess water availability, seasonal, long-term variation, take a look at what's there, what are the flows, what are the flow restrictions, how much water can we bring up, and is it a realistic source? It will also determine the optimal point of diversion. As was mentioned by Michelle, we've had conversations with regional partners that have been very helpful, the Blue Springs North of Irrigation District, which I believe Barn will give you an update after this one. They've been great as we've discussed their project and what we might glean from them, and we've also had meetings with the city of Lewiston. And contained within this scope, it also includes cooperation with the city of Lewiston and exploration of any possible opportunities for collaboration. And then assessing the impacts of climate variation, weather conditions, making sure that we're taking into account the long-term viability of the supply, and then develop conceptual design. And the conceptual design will include the intake, pumping, treatment, storage, and conveyance. We're going to do a preliminary look and identify property acquisitions or easements that may be necessary, and then also evaluate direct use versus aquifer recharge. And this is really trying to get an idea about, you know, the basics of how much water's there, what it's going to take to get up the hill, and then what do we do with it once we get it up here. And then cost estimation, which obviously is very important. We also have included in this scope a regulatory permitting assessment, and that will include identifying all regulatory requirements and permits, including local, state, federal, and also taking into account private considerations, conduct the necessary environmental assessments, and consult with all regulatory agencies and key stakeholders early and often. There's a big public involvement component to this project that will be very important as we continue this work. And then ultimately prepare for a water right application is the outcome that we are hoping for. Within the stakeholder engagement category, we've got outreach with stakeholders, including public agencies, community groups, any affected parties, and then collaboration with the NSPierce Tribe, respecting water rights and cultural values. So some significant milestones, as I mentioned, we've had meetings with the city of Lewiston, and we will continue that coordination. We selected HCR Engineering for the study, negotiated the scope of services, and that's been agreed to. The total project cost is $335,841. So we have the generous contribution from the Water Resource Board of $182,500. Pback at their meeting last Thursday voted to commit $187,000. That is the amount, it's about $153,000 to complete the project, and then there's a 10% contingency and Pback's authorization to cover any contingency that might be necessary to complete the project. This, the agreement between the city of Moscow and HDR Engineering will go to our administrative committee on Tuesday of next week, and then on June 2nd, it will go to our city council for approval, after which point we will begin in earnest the work on this project. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, thank you, Tyler. Questions, Mr. Chairman? Go ahead, Dale.
How much IRA, is your name IRA?
Tyler.
How much precipitation is you getting from Pullman and the state of Washington?
That's a great question, and that's something that, you know, having the mechanism for cooperation has been really critical. $187,000 that was committed, that's all, that's funding that includes funding from our state of Washington entities, and so that includes funding from Whitman County and the city of Pullman. And then we continue to cooperate with the Washington State entities, including the Department of Ecology, as we look to what the obvious next phases of this project will be, because it's going to be really important that we have everybody in the skin in the game.
City of Pullman has the most to gain here. They're a bigger entity, Washington State University and Pullman, they have the bigger share of the aquifer. So are they willing to really think, really going to step up and come to the plate, whether it's necessary?
Yeah, board member, Mr. Chair, I believe so. We've had really good participation from both city of Pullman, from Whitman County, and from the Department of Ecology. I think there's a recognition, a broad recognition that we all share this aquifer, and as was mentioned, there is a bigger population that's drawing more water on the Washington side of this basin. And so I do believe that we will see continued and increased cooperation from the Washington side, and historically, we've seen very good support from the Washington side. When you look at the historic projects that have led us to this point, both the state of Washington and the local Washington entities have definitely put a proportional amount into game for moving those projects along.
Good. Mr. Chairman Tyler, so have you given HDR a number of what volume of water you're going to shoot for, or are they going to determine that?
Mr. Chair, remember, we have given them a target, we have the target volume that has been established through our alternate supply study, and so we have the target amount, which includes a 50-year demand horizon, accounting for growth, and also a 30% contingency, which is the estimated amount necessary to stabilize the aquifer. And so that's our target amount, it's 10 CFS. Doesn't sound like a lot of water for us up here, it is, but in the context of what we're looking at, it's a relatively low amount, especially considering the flows in the Clearwater River. For example, November 1st through July 31st, it represents 0.17% of the minimum stream flow in that river. So, and then August 1st through October 31st, it's 0.22% of the minimum stream flow in Clearwater River. So we're less than a quarter of 1% is what we represent, but it makes a big difference. You know, we have the advantage of dry weather farming, so we're not looking for agricultural water, and so this really is just domestic use, and so it makes it a relatively smaller amount.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Al.
So Tyler, without previewing the outcome of your study, it looks to be like what you're headed for is to use the Clearwater as opposed to the other sources that we've been looking at over the last years, is more reliable and more available?
Yeah, that's a great question, Chairman, member Barker. Yes, that's correct. We have, through our water alternative supply study, we had identified four groupings of projects, the board may recall. The first project that we focused on was all smaller local supplies. They were in-basin sources of water. We wanted to make sure we vetted out the in-basin before we looked outside of basin. As we ran through the numbers on that, you hit it on the head, but the reliability just wasn't there. The amount of water that we could get and when we could get it, it wasn't a reliable source. And so at that point, we went back through an analysis to determine where it was best to put our energy, and it was determined that this was the next most likely source for an alternate supply in the basin.
Okay, Dean?
Mr. Chairman, Tyler, you mentioned 10 CFS as you're looking at a diversion rate. Do you have a total annual volume you're thinking about?
I do have that, I don't have it in front of me. I'm happy to, I can send that out to the board, and we'd be happy to provide that information. You know, in some ways, what will actually be diverted will be driven by, one, the water year and the aquifer conditions. And so as the aquifer stabilizes and as we see what happens with use demand, the cheapest water is still going to be the aquifer water, and we're not going to discontinue the use of the aquifer. So our goal is to not be mining the aquifer and pursue stabilization. And so the aquifer will still be the primary point of extraction, and then this will supplement to the point that we reach that stasis and have that stabilization.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Tyler, if this all goes as planned, you pull water from the Clearwater, will it go into a treatment center in both Moscow and Pullman?
That's, Mr. Chair, remember, that's something that will need to be determined. This study will take a preliminary look at that, but certainly treatment will be required no matter, whether we do aquifer recharge or whether we have a direct pipe that goes across the border and we have, you know, some sort of entity that's created that we sell water to the entities at proportional rates. That's yet to be determined. Regardless, we'll have to treat it to drinking water standard. And so there will be, what we know is that the water will have to be pumped up the hill, we'll have to have a treatment facility, and then from there, this study will take a preliminary look at that, and subsequent work will have to make the determination about what is the most, one, cost-effective, and two, from a regulatory standpoint, what's the most likely and best way to distribute that water? Whether it be to have the water cross the border in the aquifer, and we have some sort of financial arrangement to make sure that the Washington entities are participating proportionally to their uses, or do we just have a pipe that goes across and they pay directly for water that's delivered in a pipe?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the update. We look forward to continuing to work with you and help you in any way we can.
Thank you, we really appreciate the time, the board, thank you.
Okay, all right. Next up, Lewiston Porch Church Exchange Project.
Looks like Barn is taking the mic.
Mr. Matt.
Well, he's got his whole team here. Who's home minding the store? I know who would normally take over, or who was in charge. She's not there anymore, so.
It's taken a team of us to replace her.
That's not true.
I will say that I can assure the board that water is deep in her blood, because as she has retired and she's been on vacations in multiple locations throughout the world, I still get frequent, multiple times a day messaging about water across the state of Idaho.
No, she has a hard time staying away from it.
I would say you're correct.
Okay?
And, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind while we get the presentation set up, I may want to take off my lorry hats and put on my Idaho Water Users hat real quick.
You bet.
I want to just thank this board for your effort, your stewardship, and your leadership, which is fantastic. In my role, I have to travel around the state, and I actually see each and every one of you at our meetings presenting on local and regional issues and the support that you give back to us. So we saw Mr. Gibbs down at Mount failure when he came and presented to us, Mr. McCann, he gave us a wonderful tour of some of the facilities there in the Wood River Valley as we were up there as part of those water colleges and then the water gene. So I just, you guys do a fantastic job. So I just, you guys do a fantastic job, and your leadership's appreciated. But we can tell and we feel and know that you truly love water and you want to be stewards for the state, and we appreciate your efforts.
Okay, thank you. When you live in the desert, you're motivated.
It is a bit more than that. So my name is Barney Metz, I'm the general manager for the Lewiston Orchard Irrigation District. And with me today is part of our team to go over this. I have Bobby Hills from the Nessprst Tribe, who are an integral part of our partners and resources and our team, as we continue working on what we've done over the last decade and we did before. And then I have Mr. David Watkins from JUV Engineers, who is the district's engineer of record, but they were also scoped out JUV Engineers to be the project engineer and construction manager for this project. We also have our federal nexus. We appreciate what we have at the Bureau of Reclamation. We have brought in the Army Corps of Engineers into this project now to get across lands on the south side of the river. And then we also have the NRCS that's involved in this now, because this fits some of their programs that they want to do. I did have a discussion with NRCS, considering the cuts that they'd have. We weren't sure that we were still going to be viable to the accepting of monies that they might have, that they continue to think that we potentially would be a good fit. We also have local, regional stakeholders within our community, the city of Lewiston and the Nessprst Tribe, Nessprst Tribe and Nessprst County, as we continue to move this forward. And lastly, but not least, is the Water Resource Board. You guys are a fantastic partner, and your support and your efforts and what you've put into this project have been fantastic. And it really is showing the state's commitment to hopefully encourage, and maybe might better is force, the federal government to bring up their portions that they need to, to bring this forward. And they did just recently come up with some additional monies that they put into the game that I believe has been announced to the Water Resource Board. So we're going to give a real quick brief history. We know that you've got lunch coming, and then you're going to go on a tour with us, and we appreciate you taking your time. Talk about our overall objective, real quick, concept design. Talk about the preliminary engineering report and the 30% design which you guys were partnering, and again, thank you for that. Look at our next steps forwards through the construction manager, general contractor. You saw a similar setup for the Mountain Home Air Force Base, pipeline that came out of Snake River, similar to that. And then what those schedules potentially look like. The one thing that we are still out of control is, what level does the environment look like for the environmental portion of this? So it's really a weird spot that the Nessprst Tribe is encouraging the federal government to go faster and not be so over redundant on their efforts to get there. And the federal government coming back and saying, no, no, we want to do a full-blown EIS on this again. And so we're working through that dance and that relationship to figure out how much effort we need to do on that. But from the engineering side, from the construction side, the monies are starting to line up. I think we're moving in the right direction. But until somebody can put a head and an arm and a foot back on the Bureau of Reclamation and get some progress out of them, we're kind of hung up there a little bit right now, but we'll continue to move that forward. I'm going to have Bobby talk about the importance of why part of this project needs to happen outside of the fact that LOID doesn't have water.
Good morning. The map that's on the display right here, you see different colored boxes. The green is what's called tribal trust. It's land that's held in trust for the Nessprst Tribe specifically. The pink is individual trust, so that's land that's held in trust specifically for individual tribal members. And then the orange is land, just the land that the tribe has purchased over the last couple of years. The significance of this is an orange line that's pretty faint. It runs right down the middle of the photo and then starts to head left. That's the 1863 reservation. So everything kind of on the right-hand side is within the 1863. But you have to remember, this entire photo is actually within the 1855 reservation. It's entirely within the Indian Claims Commission specifically for the Nessprst Tribe. When this project was started in 1906, the main red line is the Sweetwater diversion. And in order to create that, they condemned tribal land in state court to this day, which the tribe says was illegal. And it wasn't just tribal land, it was individual allotments. So these were individual allotment owners that had their land condemned and weren't even compensated for it. From 1906 until the mid 2000s, water within the drainage was completely diverted out and off the reservation into the city of Lewiston. It wasn't until 2006, when the parties started working together, that we got minimum stream flows. And at the time, it was 1 CFs. What's critical to both the Nessprst Tribe and to ESA-listed fish is what we call a Waha, which is down in the bottom left. It's very unique to the Clearwater, it was formed by a landslide, and there's no natural outlet to it. There is a spring that produces anywhere from 3 to 11 CFs at 50 degrees. And what's key to that is that water comes out in the summertime at its highest flow and at its coolest temperature, which is critical for ESA-listed steelhead.
So this just gives a quick rundown of the surface system that would be title transferred after this happened. So once the river pumping station is built out and works and is proven, then we will go through the process that we've been going back to Washington DC to talk to our congressional about Mattis title transfer. So everything upstream from the toe of the dam at Reservoir A or Mans Lake locally to the highest end of the system will be transferred in fee to the Nessprst Tribe. Everything downstream from the dam into the district for delivery in that will be transferred entitled to LOID. Reservoir A, Mans Lake will still be in play as primary source for irrigation water storage. This needs a much bigger pumping system to make it on-demand. And the Nessprst Tribe want to reach settlement and agreement, have agreed to allow the transgression that has occurred within the reservation to stay in place to be a buffer to lower the cost of the overall project so that we can use that and move it forward. So at the very top of our system, and this isn't how it exactly flows, but this shows you where we get the water from. But Captain Johns Creek is the highest point that we affect, and that is a tributary to the Snake River. We divert a little bit of water out of there, it goes into Wet Creek. We dam up Wet Creek, we release the waters at the high end of Silters Meadows, flows down Wet Creek. We divert it out of that watershed, running around the mountain, dropping into the east fork of Sweetwater. During the early spring and in the fresh ups, we will divert water out of the west fork of Sweetwater and temporarily store that in Lake Waha, that we later pump back out of Lake Waha during the summer to provide additional flows. If you don't pump them out, they naturally sink through that landslide, which goes through a three-lake system, and they come out at Sweetwater Springs. And then eventually, all that water will end up going down Sweetwater Creek, and will end up at the Sweetwater Canal. And it's a 10-mile off-stream, off-site diversion. It goes there and stores in, and then once it leaves Mans Lake, Reservoir A, it enters our system in a pressurized system. That pressurized system provides irrigation for the Lewiston Orchards. It provides livestock watering, and it is also the fire protection for 22,000 people. So you can never really turn off the dam unless you're going to turn off all the fire hydrants in the orchards and remove fire protection from that program.
They tried that in California, it didn't work out very well.
I think you're correct. Just a real quick brief, and I'll get through this, and this is a ton of information. You don't have to read it and start, or we'll not be a test on this. You know, the district itself tried to resolve this through a bond issue back in the 70s, and it failed. And in fact, we just had a bond before, and we all know how bonds do in Idaho, it's a tough get, getting over the 67%, but we had a infrastructure bond in for the city of Lewiston that failed yesterday at like 62%. So getting bonds passed are just tough to do. We came into being through the Snake River Basin adjudication process. As you know, the Nessprst Tribe filed for the water rights at the state of Idaho, coming off the Snake River system. As part of that agreement, the Nessprst agreement, our project was specifically called out to be taken care of, and this river pump station had been built at that time. Congress, when they came back through, said too much money for the overall package, reduced down, took us off. Left within that Nessprst agreement was the ability for the Nessprst Tribe to pursue litigation on the transgression in relation to our project. They immediately filed a suit under ESA for listed steelhead that we are currently operating on biological opinion. Three have biological analysis, four at NIMs. But there's no more fish biology than NIMs, so we just operate off of fish bio, the bio number three. We'll see where we work through that portion there. But getting this project done will remove those concerns away for not only the future upcoming hopeful renewal of the Nessprst agreement, but also some of the litigation issues for the federal government. Our initial solution was to have a groundwater replacement system. We drilled the first pilot test well, we achieved the flow out of there that we hoped to. We thought, great, we need to continue moving forward. The hydrologists were all like, we'd like to pump it for a few more years and look at the data before, but we had success, we moved forward, we drilled the second well. And then the year 2021 came along, and as Michelle alluded to earlier, it was about as bad as it could possibly get for us. We actually had rolling brownouts in Lewiston, we had fires, and we had no water. So at that point, we're at half the solution, because we thought it would take about four of those wells to do this. If we can't make the solution at two wells, there was no way we're going to make it at four. And so then we paused everything, got through COVID, and then basically circled back around and said, you know, look at the other alternatives. Pump the station out of the Snake, pump the station out of the Clearwater, groundwater, or do nothing. Do nothing meant more litigation, we failed at the groundwater, and so we looked at the Clearwater. Kind of funny, the local group is called the Lower Clearwater Exchange Project. The concept of what we're doing has been looked at multiple times. This is what the bond issue was for back in 72. This solution has been the primary solution on the table for over 15 years now. And so we're moving forward with that through efforts by the Nessprst Tribe and Lloyd. They came up with the initial concept design. Want to resource more, just put some money into it. They're going to show you what you've got, your money for this, and it shows that we should move forward with this. This is the solution. And we actually have some really good details for the board in regards to this. And at the end of the day, we have three issues that we're trying to solve. And these have been the same three issues that we've been working on now for 20-plus years. And that is, get a reliable water supply for LOID. Take care of the tribal trust federal treaty obligations that have been bent, broken, or not taken care of over the years. And then lastly, help solve the ESA-listed salmon and species that we have with both Wet Creek, Sweetwater, which then flows into Lapoye and goes into Clearwater. Really, this project at the end of the day is going to use less water than we affect those streams with now by reducing the amount of our water right, which we have agreed to in principle. And we're letting all that water flow through these tributaries to the Clearwater, and then we have a smaller diversion rate taken out lower in the system. So in concept, we're doing nothing different, other than having to pump water uphill and not let gravity flow it down the hill. But we're taking out a smaller quantity, just lowering the system. So I go, I'm going to kick off, I'm giving this real quick, and then I'll kick it to David. We have to figure out where on the river to go. And this is why through in the Army Corps of Engineers, there's, when they flooded Lower Granite, Congress gave them money to go out and buy lands to replace the flooded lands for recreational purposes. So they're recreation mitigation lands. The place where we're going to come off the river, I'm telling you now, from a practical standpoint, nobody's using that piece of land. It's not accessible by the public, it's surrounded by private property that there's no access to. And I was stupid enough to try to climb through the blackberry bushes on the four-foot shelf to get down to the edge. Nobody's using it as a recreation, I promise you. So we got through that, we appreciate Idaho Fishing Game. They had to sign off on allowing a pipeline to move underneath this piece of recreation mitigation land. But we do have the support from Idaho Fishing Game in relation to that. And then it was just cost, right? We need to figure out how to build a pumping station. It's got to be viable, it's got to be workable, but it also has to be something that people can put money to and afford. Our current water right on the main stem of Sweetwater diversion is 55 CFs. Our take from the Clearwater River would be 18. So again, it's a reduction in the total amount of water, because that supply of water will be there year-round. Where on the Sweetwater, there's only a window in the spring when we have it. And this is a great year to show our system, we are the model for climate change. We're very low elevation, we used to be a really big snowpack system. Now we are more terrain. Our irrigation runoff ended at the end of April this year. We currently have 1 to 2 CFs in our main canal, and that's all we're going to get for the rest of the year. So we are supplementing our irrigation supply with pumping from the wells that exist there. But we're able to take that lesser amount off of the Clearwater, because that bigger amount is there more frequently and throughout the year. Once we get it pumped up, the next big problem is that you have a huge hill to climb up. And so we're talking pressures of 500 PSI at the bottom. And then you got to get it up the hill, and then you got to move it seven and a quarter miles out to Mans Lake, and we'll dump it into that side. And if there's anything else you want on this, but you're welcome.
Oh yeah, no problem. So this is also just summarizing the concept design. This is the report that we did about two years ago. This was essentially before we collected the more detailed information, did more analysis. Lloyd wanted to go back to this alternative and get some conservative cost estimates together. Still looking at that original location, but looking at different sub-locations along the stream. And then trying to put more recent cost estimates to it. This is a summary of what was in that concept design. I'm just showing it to show how this has progressed. So the idea was six mechanical screens, six pumps, only one on a VFD, and then about seven and a quarter miles of 24-inch transmission main. And then as I go through the next two steps, you'll see how this is morphed over time. But after the concept design report, oh, this is a sketch that we did after that report to show roughly what it could look like with that concept. And this is the location that you'll see today when you go out to the site.
So real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you look here on the riverbank, you see the small intrusion buttout of where the intake would come from the river, pipe underneath the railroad, underneath the private road to that rock pit, which is where this pump station would be built.
Okay, so the preliminary engineering report, this is the, we are just wrapping this one up. So it's not sealed yet, but it's very close to sealed. It's on the district's desk to review it and provide comment. But the purpose of the preliminary engineering report was to gather that data that we needed to do a more refined process, and to make sure that there weren't any fatal flaws, and to help select the location that would be the most ideal in that area. And so we did bathymetric survey, fluvial geomorphology, geotechnical borings. And that one, actually, we did multiple locations down at the river. But then we also did the entire seven and a quarter miles of pipeline. So we now have rock depths all the way to Mans Lake. And then we did a transient analysis on the designed pipeline to look at what options we had for protecting this pipeline and the pump station in the case of power outage and things like that. It also included looking at intake structure location, the pump station and intake structure design concepts. So what kind of intake structure, what kind of wet well and pump station. And then we've done a more refined design of the transmission main, and then, like I said, an updated construction cost estimate. So this is the bathymetric survey and the location that we're talking about. So on the, is this at a point here?
Yes.
Bam, okay. This location is where the building in that sketch was located, is in this flat rock pit area. And so right in front of it, you'll see in a map in the next couple of slides, we labeled them, but there's locations all along this stretch of the river that we looked at in these different analyses to see where the best location would be. But location one is immediately in front of it, and that's what was in that sketch that you saw.
The one other thing that I want to point out with this is that we've engaged the Nessprst Tribe all the way through this. If somebody was going to pop this out, if there's an issue with it, they needed to be consulted. So we went to them and their fish biologists and made sure that we weren't going to negatively impact the new salmon or another fish that use this river, because it doesn't do us any good to get off of one ESA issue and create a new one.
The other issue that we had was cultural issues. This is a big cultural site. From what you would typically think as cultural, such as burial grounds and things like that, but there's also significant rock features throughout this whole section of the Clearwater River. So we had to make sure, not only where the pumping plant was going to go, but also where the- the pipeline is going to go so that it didn't, we avoided those rock features. We'll point some of those out from there today.
One thing you'll notice is that it's very flat. Most of that area, there's a relief of about five feet, but there are some deeper sections here than there's this, you'll see it in another figure in a sec, but there's like a throat here where the river is restricted and there's some deeper sections in there that get up to like 10 to 15 feet. Or sorry, not, that's not water depth. 10 to 15 feet of relief. So like from the edge of the river, this is 745 here and that's 740. So like from here to here, the bottom of the river is fairly flat, but then this is like a deeper section right here. Here's water depth. So when we did the hydraulic model for this section of the river, we modeled the water depth at different flow rates of the river. And these are those spots that I was just pointing at. You can see that there's deeper sections sprinkled through here. A good one right there at the throat at the restriction and then another one right in front of location one, but a little bit downstream.
And part of this, and the importance of it is, is learn from your mistakes. The city of Lewiston's intake that came off of the clear water river to their filtered treatment plant, the original plant, was not located in the proper spot and they have massive silting issues. And so we didn't want to, and that's part of what the city of Lewiston is doing right now is moving their intake to get away from their silting issues. We wanted to make sure that we did a good job to not build a great project, but then fill it in with dirt.
Yeah. A few differences too, is we're in the free flowing section of the clear water river. We're upstream of the backwater. And this model here also estimated erosion and sedimentation of sediment. And so it was looking at the different locations and trying to score them based on what would be the best location. Like I said, we also collected geological borings out here. We've not done the in-water borings yet. During the next phase of design, there is a discussion of collecting those. The permitting for those and the cost are substantial, so we haven't performed those yet. All along these locations where we, we were considering, we collected geotechnical. Like I said, transient analysis, this is a model to predict the range of pressures. You could see at all the locations in the pipeline and at the pump station, if there's a power outage, that was the condition that we considered. So full flow, 18 CFS and then the power cuts immediately, what happens? And it, it told us exactly what we thought it would tell us. You need some kind of control measure to prevent large negative pressures or really high positive pressures. So what we're considering now is a 6,000 gallon surge tank down at the river pump station. And with that, it keeps it within a range that we can design for. And so the, I think it's 580 is the maximum pressure down at the river pump station with that surge tank. Okay, this is the map that shows the locations. Probably shouldn't put it first, that would have made more sense, but this is the pump station location. And like I said, right in front of it is location one. So the sketch you saw shows the pump station here and the intake structure here. We also considered location three, which is farther down. Location two, which has some benefits because there's large, flat area of land here, but the problem is this entire piece is Army Corps mitigation land and it appears to have habitat, like there's a lot of trees and life out on that area. And so this pretty quickly became an unfavorable location. And then the Bureau of Reclamation Army cord liked this location because there is no mitigation land in that little gap right there. Yeah, can you go ahead?
This, I can't tell you how frustrating this Army mitigation land issue was. So this is a sizable kind of island piece that sticks out there. We'll call it 100 yards across, 150 yards. These two black lines that are going together are the recreation mitigation lands that are about 15 feet. The effort that we've worked on for this permission to cross this 15 feet being underneath that nobody ever knows that we're there has been tremendous.
Okay, so during the P E R, we also did a preliminary layout of the pump station. You can see, this is not the current design. Again, I'm trying to show a progress. So during the P E R phase, we laid out a lot of different alternatives and sat down with the district to talk through what their operators wanted to see, how do you access everything? How do you remove the pumps? This is one of those versions and so you can see there's four pumps in this alternative. This is all welded steel because it's all high pressure. This is that 6,000 gallon surge tank and then this is the electrical room. And you'll see that that has moved and changed as we moved into 30% design. During the P E R, we also considered a lot of different types of wet wells. These are just two of them that we looked at, but there's very, I think we looked at 20 layouts or something like that. But this is a trench style from the Hydraulic Institute manual. This is one of the images and this is what a circular typically looks like, but I'm just giving examples that we looked at. This is the transmission pipeline alignment. So down here is that location where the river pump station would be. Then it comes up from here to here, that's all one private landowner and that's one reason this is such a favorable location. It's a private landowner that wants to work with the district, wants, is okay with it being located on his property, is okay with the pipeline going through his property and it simplifies the land ownership challenge that tends to plague projects like this. So from here to here, we go through one and then we end up in a private subdivision from here to here. And they are on board, but there is still pieces there that we're working through like easements. Then you end up in county road and now we're in right away from here all the way down to here, straight across. And then right here, this road is the boundary with the reservation. And this section here is the last piece of the pipeline and it goes across reservation and then into the top of reservoir. And that's actually one of the benefits of this project we haven't mentioned yet is that this actually provides the water on the far side of the reservoir from the outlet. So now there will be also a benefit in water quality and pushing water through this reservoir where the, the other alternative that we've been working on, the wells, they all come in through the outlet. So when the wells are on, they're pushing water through the system, through the outlet of the reservoir into it. And so you're surging from the outlet side where this one is going to flow through the reservoir. So that is added benefit.
Another consequence that we've had over the years now is if we, we do start flows off the surface water system, we're not flowing as much cooler water through the entire reservoir out. There's another complication with our budget because we wouldn't want to run out of a list of them. Our water's hot.
Of the groundwater.
Yes. And so when we push water back in from the bottom during the winter, we actually have the ability to melt all the ice off the lake real quickly so that the divers can come in and die. But during the summer, that hot water never even makes it back to the lake. And so you get this stagnant body of water that now has introduced us to harmful algae clones and it's been a new maintenance issue that we've been dealing with in this reservoir. By going to this system, we'll be bringing in cooler water, flowing it through the reservoir for the entire irrigation season and it'll have a chance to flow through and we hope that that will help us reduce our occurrences of harmful algae.
Joanne.
David, I have just a quick question. By looking at this map, it looks like all of the pipe is on county, well, other than parts going, coming up from the river through the private landowners, but most of it's all on county roads. You're not planning on cutting through any farmer's fields?
Chairman, I'm Joanne. That is correct. It's, the only thing going through what would be called a farmer's field is this first private landowner. There's a small easement through an empty developed lot to get it into the roadway of the private development, but even that section through the development goes through a roadway. This is a private roadway. And then from there, it's all county right away.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Dean.
Mr. Chair, a question, what's your total head to get to the reservoir for the river to the reservoir?
I'm going to mess this up. Never do math on the spot. Yeah, it is a lot ahead.
What, 275, 300 feet?
Yeah.
500 PSI.
Yeah, but so you're looking, you're looking at over 1,000 feet ahead.
Yeah, I want to say 1,400, but I, I don't know if I'm going to mess that up. It's, it's a lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what's the capacity of that man reservoir, that reservoir you're going to?
So the, the physical capacity of it's 3,000. The safety of dams negotiated capacity is 2,440 and the restricted safety of dams value is 1,908. Which number do you want?
Yes, well, I'm going to follow up. So is, is part of this project to resolve those safety of dam issues or is that a whole separate thing?
So that's something that sits out there that we don't know yet. So in the very original concept, when this was going to get transferred from the Bureau of Reclamation to the Bureau of Indian Affairs, we helped trust with the NSPR's tribe, BIA and their safety of dams are going to take it over. But BIA's safety of dams program is ran by the Bureau of Reclamation, so we expected no change. Since then, the NSPR's tribe has divorced, the Bureau of Indian Affairs on this project specific, and this is going to be transferred and tied up to the NSPR's tribe. And there are some discussions about much higher level agencies for the federal government assuming ownership of this dam contractually and then contracting the safety dams back to the Bureau of Reclamation. We don't have that answer yet because the Department of Interior has yet to say yes or no.
Okay. Did I catch something off my eye over here? Al.
Well, yeah, Mr. Chairman. So when the water's pumped up to the top of the mesa, I guess is what you call it, do you, are you going to need transfer stations, pumping stations to keep the water flowing or is it basically flat from there to the lake?
Yeah, thank you, Chair and Mr. Parker. We did look at during the concept design, doing what you were talking about, so essentially booster stations along the way. The challenge is it, one, it greatly increases the cost of the project, but two, it also increases the number of facilities that the district would have to decide to operate, maintain, drop power. Power is, was a big thing on this project and we are lucky to even be able to get the power we need at this location without dragging it behind us to other stations. So right now, the plan is one pump station at the river. The head is high enough that after you get up on the hill, it pushes it all the way to Mans Lake. There are no other pumps in the system.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Parker, this, from this shadow part here north, it's steep. It is an ugly climb. Once you get up over that bluff, it's a very gradual increase in elevation for the stream out there. So the massive majority of the lift is in that front end and then after that it gets much more.
There is a gravity section, but it's so small that you wouldn't see it on this. 100 feet, 200 feet or something. So we do break head on the last tilt of the man like close by gravity.
I think you can continue.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me, Brian.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I'm not ignoring you eventually.
The horsepower was total horsepower and you're bringing your power across the river, right? Is that an underwater?
No, so the, the reason I, oh, sorry, Chairman.
Your fault.
Mr. Holmstead. The, the reason I said that they were lucky is clear water power has a substation directly across the river and they're already bringing high voltage across the river right there. So the, the tricky part with that is in order to serve this much power at this location, Lloyd is, would need to, or the project would need to fund upgrades to that substation. And I think the last estimate was 6,000. And that's with all new transformers and upgrades to one of the bays of the substation and stringing new lines on that, between those existing poles. So we would just come off of one of those poles and then we're placing, I think, four or five site transformers at a station that will step it down one more time. We're going to do medium voltage. The horsepower, I should have wrote that one down. Adam, do you know? Is it 1,000 total?
1,000 each.
1,000 each, four pumps, so 4,000 of those horse total.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Holmstead, as this project has changed over the years, clear water, when we were back on the very original concept of this being the Clearwater Exchange, Clearwater Power at that time built a new substation where it's located that today, if you're going to be able to see that. They actually built a bed inside of that substation in anticipation of this project coming to fruition. Problem is, we never got very deep in the woods in the, in the weeds and then we got off on the groundwater side. But that's why it's, the power coming in is good and there's actually a spot for it, but it needs to be capable of taking the load, load that we're going to require from it, so we'll do that. The district is still looking at how we deal with the power costs. We've been bringing them into our cost structure to be able to pay for that. But the one question that we're going to be working on is, does LOID need to become our own power utility to potentially buy tier one power from BBA if that power's still available or reserve power from Bureau of Reclamation to be able to lower our costs down for trading in gravity by the nature of grade for now a pump system?
The next slide was the sticker shop. He was asking questions too. I'm just joking. In the concept report, we had a range of, I think it was 45 to 60, depended a lot on where things were located and what kind of alternatives were selected. Right now, at the end of the P E R, with the current equipment costs, we're sitting at about 45. So 54, sorry. I almost skipped you a biscuit. Yep. I don't know what else to say about that. A lot of the costs, especially in the, this one here and this one here is because for medium pressure right now, we're doing welded steel and that has to do, one, with the availability of pipe and we're at a high enough pressure in the medium pressure section of the pipeline that thick PVC, the prices are high enough right now that welded steel actually made no sense. So these are things that could change. You'll see as we get to a few slides ahead, there is going to be a CMGC process and part of that is trying to nail down the availability of materials and what is most cost effective to install. So some of these sections could change if the CMGC process finds a savings switching to two hundred.
The good news is that, Mr. Chairman, is that we, every time that we get this more detail in, we remove some of the uncertainty, which allows us to refine that cost down. And so at $20.23, we're looking at 68 and at $20.25, we're looking at, you know, $5,000 savings there that continue to move us forward. And as we move this project forward, we will continue to strive to reduce that cost that gets that much closer to the ocean.
Okay, how many years will we have to wait till it was free? You kept carrying that.
Well, if you let me work on that, I might be able to come up with an answer.
No, I think you're doing great. It's going the right direction.
Mark.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. This is going to be a buried pipeline. Thank you.
There, Chairman and Mr. Gibbs, there will be some above ground structures, but they're going to be like the tops of vaults. So there's going to be some air relief valves on the pipeline, some locations to pump out little spots, things like that. And so on the shoulder, there will be some concrete structures visible for, for the most part. Yeah, it's all buried. I think our plan, yeah, our plan right now is even coming out of the pump station, we're going to go below ground. And going up the hill, we're actually building an access road on the pipeline, even through the steep sections that aren't meant for casual access, but a contractor can install a pipeline.
Won't look like your thing in grace.
What's that?
Won't look like your thing in grace. Okay, all right, let's see, continue, I think.
Uh, let's see. The, so for the 30% design, now that the site is, so one of the outcomes of the P E R was that location one, which is the location we wanted this entire time, is the best location. So from a sediment risk perspective, from the glosses in the river, the depths in the river, even biological considerations, we actually looked at the risk of the presence of fish at those different locations and location one was actually the one that had the least likelihood of presence of fish. Risk of large materials, like during a flood condition, like trees coming down the river, this is a location that is unlikely to receive a direct impact from something like that. And so that was good to hear because we really liked location. So now 30% design, the point is to progress that now into design, especially when we go to select a scheme. when we go to select a CMGC, it gives us something to start off with, where they can really dive deep into the details and help us with the cost estimating, the material availability, the constructability considerations, the floor, floor permit. And so, um, there's also, in the thirty percent design, there was a healthy agency coordination piece, uh, to work through all of these and make sure we're not missing anything, we're not missing any permits. We talked with Noah in the tribe about fish considerations. There's also multiple, there's the development, there's multiple private landowners. The Nespris County actually has a roadway project in the section of this that was a complicated thing to work through, and it may require some more coordination as we progress on the design. Uh, real quick, you're gonna see it when you're out there, we, you probably won't go down to this location, it's hard to get to. But, this is looking at location one from, um, a section of the shore that fills out a little during winter. But, if you can see right here, this tree here, and there's like a big branch overhanging right here, this is effectively, in the next couple of slides, you'll see a river intake structure. It is located right in this area. This is, this is actually the private landowner, Mr. Gibbs. This rock quarry, or, or old excavation area, is where the river pump station will go. So, again, the idea is to widen it a little, there, we're gonna demo some of this wall and build a retaining wall on the front side. And so, right now, the site design is actually balanced. So, the current design and the building side, uh, this site is actually balanced, which is, that's good. Okay, so, this is the first 3D model slide. Uh, we have a couple more that show these in more detail, but this is, the surface you see here is the existing ground. So, what you're not seeing is the modifications to the ground yet. The sites of what, we're still working through this 3D model to refine it, but essentially, like I said, this backside will get cut into, the front side will have the retaining wall. And, uh, this access road is, uh, the plan is to modify it as little as possible, because this finger here is essentially solid rock. When you go out there, you'll see that. Then, when you're down on the railroad, which is down here, this finger sticks out, it's just a big rock, uh, finger that, uh, the railroad probably blasted to get through. But, uh, so the plan is to not modify this access road, widen this spot, and then this is the building here, and that's the size of it. Uh, and then this is the intake structure. This is just looking from the other side, in the direction. And that's the pump station. Right now, the design is a flat roof, and this is gonna provide us better access for the hatches to get the pumps out. And then, the plan is to actually put the large HVAC equipment that's gonna be needed to pull the electrical room, uh, actually on the roof, uh, which helped provide, saved us some space on the site. That is, uh, the model of the inside right now, so you can see the four large pumps. And then, there's a section of flanged, uh, fittings, and then it goes to welded steel back here. This, from the floor to the top of these motors is about, I think it's thirteen feet. Those are the pumps that you just saw a second ago, so they come together, together into a welded steel section, and then they come out the building, uh, on the, at the east side. And then, this is the electrical room. And then, this rectangle, or box here, is actually the welded steel, um, surge tank. This is the intake, or the pump station design right now. This is mostly a placeholder, it doesn't really impact the above-ground stuff much, and this is the preferred design right now, is the trench style because of the small footprint. This is potentially sixty feet of vertical excavation and solid rock. So, the size of this is gonna impact a lot on cost, so the design intent right now is to keep the footprint as small as possible. There are some questions on the hydraulics on this design, and so, in, through the rest of thirty percent design and sixty, there are some questions about maybe modifying this to a different design, if the velocities and the hydraulics don't work out in our favor. So, but right now, we like this one, because it's a very small footprint. This is the intake structure. It is, uh, stationary, uh, metal screenings with pressurized air cleaning system. We're doing inclined screens. They, the inclined screen design can go vertical, but we want the benefit of the air cleaning system, and so, right now, they're at like a forty-five, forty-four degree angle. And, uh, the length is because the actual screening surface is only about one point three feet high. So, um, because of the low river elevations, to actually show, to have the redundant, or reliability that this can pump eighteen CFS, uh, our goal is, it has to do two hundred and forty days a year to meet the eighty-five hundred acre feet. And, to do that, you have to show a certain number of days even at low flow. And so, the, these screens have to be one foot submerged during those pumping days, and we're on a section of river that is very low elevation at those times. So, um, I think the river level is two point three feet at that low stage, and the screens are one point three feet high, so. We are planning on meeting the more stringent point three-three feet per second, uh, velocity for fish protection, or fish exclusion. And that's because of the long length of this structure, uh, the, and the low vol, loss velocity, the fish would actually be in front of the stream for a long period of time, and so, we're trying to meet the more stringent, you know, requirement at point two-three. I always thought, when we settled on this design, I always thought it looked like a Hoover shampoo, like carpet shampoo. It's very, we're, we're trying to vacuum up a very small height amount of water at a high flow rate, and so, it's kind of fanned out is, is what the design is, so. Uh, this thing's only twelve feet tall, so the idea is to be able to add, these are man hatches here, and then there's some handles for sluice gates in there. The intent is to be a hundred percent redundant, so you can actually run eighteen CFS in one half, and anything under twenty-eight thousand cubic feet per second in the river, um, this hatch will be, and, and the top of the structure, which we haven't designed all the site civil pieces, but, uh, there's gonna be like a shelf here, like a large flat area. That whole area will be accessible at twenty-eight thousand cubic feet per second or lower in the river. And so, that gives us a long enough period in the year that the district can access one half of these at a time in order to do maintenance. There's gonna be air headers, and if anything goes wrong, they would want to de-water and access half of it. Anything above that, this becomes submerged, but still functional. And so, the, there's no electronics or moving pieces of equipment below the water level, it's all static screen and air headers, so.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, just out of curiosity, with that screen, you don't, you don't have any cleaning devices on it, and it is, other than air cleaning, is that right?
Yep.
And then, the mesh, is it sized to keep out smokes, or?
Yes.
Just adult fish?
Uh, no, it's meant to exclude, uh, smokes as well. It's, uh, the company we are working with, this meets all the most stringent fish requirements. So, um, the intent is to exclude all those, but, and then the velocities are low enough that they aren't impinged on the screen surface as well.
Mr. Chairman, is the airburst automatic, or do you do it as needed, or?
Yeah, so, you see a cluster of pipes here? There are versions of this where you just run one air pipe or two air pipes down. We decided, so there's eight individual screen plates, so they're sized that way, so that, uh, you know, two operators can actually lift it out of, um, its position if they needed to work on it. Each one of these eight have a air header and an isolation valve. So, the isolation valve's gonna be located up by the railroad, the compressors and the pump station, and then each header has its own airline that comes down. So, that way, if a line breaks, there's an isolation valve to shut it off, and then the remaining air headers can work. So, we're trying to keep it as reliable and redundant as possible, and since it's designed to be submerged, we wanted to make it a bit more bulletproof, so that if something goes wrong, they can turn off one of the air headers without compromising the whole system.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Olmstead, in regards to your question, it'll be able to do both. So, you can set it up on SCADA to pick out whatever timeframe you want and blast out, and then if you come down and you need to blast it automatically, you can go over and hit and bang up on your bush.
Zen. It'll also be designed to blast moving downstream, so on rivers with higher amounts of vegetation, this river is called Clearwater for a reason. We anticipate the presence of like, plant life on the stream very low, but even if it does accumulate on the surface, like this one will blast, and then it'll move to this one, and the intent is to move the material downstream and then, uh, moves on past the structure, so. That's more critical on rivers that have high loads of vegetation than other material. Okay. Uh, like I said, we'll be doing a CMGC process. It'll be slightly different than Mountain Home. I think Mountain Home, was it Progressive Design Build? Yeah. It, but, so CMGC, we'll be doing the whole design, the Lloyd team will do the entire design, but the CMGC will be brought in between the thirty and the sixty percent to provide cost estimating, constructability reviews, material considerations, things like that. The biggest concerns we have right now are definitely the wet well excavation, like I said, sixty feet deep. You'll also see when you go out there, it's not a very big site, so you have a very small, tight space to do this work, and the deep excavation, how they perform that will matter and could change the design, and so that's why the CMGC process will be valid.
Mr. Chair, David, uh, how do you plan to do that deep wet well excavation? Are you gonna drill it, or?
Um, let me, if you don't mind, I'm gonna flip back for a sec. Um, the private landowner is open to blasting, so that is an option right now. But, if you can imagine, the wet well is over here, under the pumps. Right now, the plan is actually to blast or excavate a pretty large section of this piece, and actually tie into this access road over here. So, they would actually have a steep access road down to the bottom of the excavation, um, that an excavator and other equipment can get down to. That is our current plan. There are other versions of this, so, for example, City of Lewiston has a similar, similar problem, and they're doing a deep, uh, wet well at their intake structure right now, and a very short or narrow section to work in. You probably saw their rigs on the shoulder of the highway when you go by. Oh, okay, right, sorry. They're doing a C-CAM pile system, so with that one, especially if you're in solid rock, you essentially drill piles, and then there's secondary C-CAM piles that get drilled in, and then you excavate it out, the middle. And, that is an option. We're big enough that you can't just directly drill it. If we did smaller, if it was a, let's say a well, a well is actually a good example of, it's really just a deep wet well for a pump station, right? It's just a thousand feet deep instead of, you know, a hundred feet deep. And, uh, it's small enough, though, you can drill it with one drill rig, right? Twenty-four inch hole, you just drill it all out. Once you get bigger like this, those options go away, but if we had much smaller footprints, so another version is you do a few circular wet wells that can be directly drilled in rock. That is an option, but, uh, the CMGC will be important in helping make those decisions. That answer your question? Okay, um, the other thing that's important about the CMGC is it gives us an option to do some early work packages, so we have some pretty big, um, a large amount of the cost is tied up in materials, so pipe, welded steel pipe, and then the electrical system. The lead time on the substation transformers is about two years. And so, getting this person on board early, and then Lloyd and them working together on trying to decide when to order equipment, but also taking into account the not being pre-decisional and making sure the project is for sure moving forward before things are purchased, things like that. Uh, but it at least gives us the option and the ability to work with them on that. And then, the final piece is construction cost estimating. So, next steps, thirty percent design is wrapping up. We're still shooting for end of May, uh, with, uh, potentially a workshop and some meetings with the client to review it and go through any, um, comments. Sixty percent design is hopefully gonna start in July, and then go until the winter, probably early next year, like January. And then, CMGC is meant to start this year in July, and then have them on board, obviously before, uh, the end of summer. And then, the plan now is still final design at the end of twenty twenty-six, and best case is construction, or at least an early works package is under construction in twenty-seven.
Okay. That's all you got? Okay. All right. Okay, very good. Any additional questions? Pat.
Barney, what was the original cost of the nineteen seventy-two buy?
Seven point two million dollars.
And what was the recent one?
Twenty twenty-three dollars, we were six to make, and we're now sitting at fifty-five.
Was the defeat margin about the same?
You know, I, it's kind of, I don't think I've ever actually seen the boat. No, okay. Just the headlines, they fail.
Yeah.
The cost of delay is real.
If you'd have, if you'd have done it back in the seventies, you'd be replacing all the pipe now. You have the seven plus the fifty-four, or the big chunk of it, so. There's no getting around it.
No.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much, we look forward to going out and seeing what we label.
We're excited to have you, and we appreciate you, the board taking the time to date, Bill.
Okay. Oh, join, join.
Do, do you have a plan for the ARPA money and a spending plan for that?
We, we do. Uh, matter of fact, is, uh, working with Mr. Miller, so as, uh, we hit that date, we're kind of ready to send to him and start moving forward. I, I have to be honest, we, we originally, our, our goal was to have the thirty percent design at the end of December, and we asked for that one-year extension. JEB was pretty close to be ready to be done then, and I've had to do everything I can to hold them back, because we want to keep moving, but we wanted to make sure that we had funding in place to, uh, pay the bills, because we do that forward, and then it's, you guys know, because you do this on multiple projects, we're always trying to hurt the mental cag under the box to get a commitment from them, and that's always difficult.
And so, your contract with the board doesn't actually start till?
July first.
July first.
We're ready.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, Barney, does that show that you're gonna do some cloud seeding as part of this?
If I could, I'd be more happy to, Mr. Parker, but it's, uh, a little late for this year, but I could really use it this year.
This is the do-nothing alternative.
If, if you could cloud seed, uh, retroactively, you could really have a program, yeah.
I, I mean, eventually, at, at some point, is, the power facilities, um, downstream with the Army Corps of Engineers, BBA, um, and, and partners, I mean, something Lloyd would like to have and discuss and talk about, but I, I, I think it's pretty important to have conversations with the Nespris Tribe. And it would be beneficial to them, you know, the tribe, ideally in the old, ideal world, want as much water downstream as everybody else does, and so, if there's a way to produce that, and that helps the image of this fish, and helps the culture of the Nespris, I think you could have a fairly good supporter in that, but those just kind of, excuse me, those discussions will have to happen.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Patton, I have us down to non-action items for discussion. Do any board members have anything they want to break up, bring up during the work session? Okay, I think we are good to adjourn. Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I'm gonna adjourn.
Okay, second, moving seconded, all in favor, say aye. Uh, okay, we are adjourned, I spoke.